President City Councilman of January 30th, 2020, it is now 9:06 and we'll begin with roll call.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Sparza.
Present.
Councilmember Kavasi.
Present.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriolio. President Arias.
Here. And just a note to the council, our colleague, Councilman Capriolio is out sick today, so we're wishing him speedy recovery as he recovers from his illness. Now let's go into our invocation, Pastor Jim Mentix of Northeast Assembly of God.
No, that's fine. Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the many that are assembled here and for our council members whom you through the people of this state have chosen to serve, manage, defend, and encourage the common good. This morning, we pray a special prayer of healing for my representative from District 4, Mr. Capriolio. We pray that you would restore strength to his body so that he may return and continue his great work for our city. Your word assures that if we lack wisdom, we may ask of it from you and that you will always grant us this request. And so grateful for your continued guidance and care of these public servants who shoulder much great responsibility. We ask on their behalf for wisdom in all decisions they have to make and we seek the peace and your favor over our city in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have the following changes. The first one is 3B, which is a closed session item regarding Darling. Also 3C, which is a closed session item regarding Shell Oil Company. Those two are being removed. 1M, a resolution amending certain designated positions which shall be subject to the Conflict of Interest Code is going to be continued to February 13th. Those are all I have.
Thank you. Do any council members have changes to the agenda? Councilmember Chavez?
It's not a change. I just wanted to adjourn today's meeting in memory of a good friend, great public servant, Enchanter Ryan, that passed away and I wanted it to record to reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other changes, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by Member Soria, second by Member Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the minutes of January 18th, 2020, City Clerk?
No changes.
With that, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Soria, second by Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, the minutes of January 16th are approved. Now this, we will enter the ceremonial presentations. The first presentation is by the Mayor Lee Bran, City Manager's Office and Public Works in recognition of the city of Fresno as a bronze level bicycle friendly community by the League of American Bicycleists. Staff, you have the floor.
Good morning.
Morning. I'll kick this off, but I wanted to recognize our community and our staff for achieving once again the bronze status from the League of American Bicycleists as a bicycle friendly community. We're one of roughly 500 communities that are considered as bicycle friendly communities. And this is the third time that we've received this award and had this award since 2010. I do want to say that, commend the folks up here, our staff, as well as the community members that have made this happen. It takes a lot of work to make this status and these folks are the ones that have done it. I'm going to turn it over to the Public Works folks, not the Public Utilities folks, and they'll be able to give a few more words, but our next goal is a silver, right? So I'll turn it over to Scott and/or Jill.
Thank you. Yeah, we're very excited to be here today again for the third time in nine years with the bronze designation. As Mr. Shad said, this is a designation that the League of American Bicycleists give to roughly right now about 500 communities across the United States. There's three different designations or bronze. There's also a silver, which is the next level up, and gold. There's also honorable mentions for cities throughout the United States. The designation recognizes the work that we've put into the community, not only for Public Works with bicycle facilities, but also the amenities that fact provides on their buses or the outreach that parks provides to kids and students for education for bicycle safety, excuse me. And the activities that the Police Department is doing to enforce safety and laws throughout the community. So we've improved a lot since our 2015 application and we're proud of the work that we've done. We're proud of the work that our bicycle pedestrian advisory committee does monthly. They meet every month to talk about bicycle and pedestrian safety issues and improvements that we can make to the community. So we're happy to be designated again as a bronze level and we're working towards silver at the next application.
So a little more work to do and I think we can get to the silver next application. And thank you all for who have helped make this happen.
Thank you, staff. I think it's fair to say that our city is used to champions. This year, we celebrate the state championships with Central Unified, the world championships with the Edison Peewee League, and today we're celebrating Fresno City Soccer Champions. So when it comes to bicyclists, I think we want a gold. So please step up your game and get us a gold instead of a bronze next time. With that, we'll go to member Councilwoman Ismael de Soria, who will recognize the Fresno City Soccer for their California Community College Athletic Association State Soccer Championship Award and the Fresno City Wrestling Team for the California Community College Athletic Association State Wrestling Championships. So if any of you want to come work for us and get us a gold in bicycle lanes, by all means you have a job.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me? Good morning. Awesome. So first, I'm going to go ahead and call up the soccer folks. So I'll call up the head coach, Eric Solberg, Coach Blanco, and Coach Mafia. I also want to call, I know that we have administration here, President Carol Goldsmith, and your wonderful staff. I think we have Dean Lorraine Smith and Chris Bremer, if you guys want to come on up. So it is my pleasure this morning, and actually I'll call up who's here representing the soccer players. Come on up too. Sorry, I missed you guys. I'm like, you guys are the most important part of this presentation. Some of you guys come to this side. Yeah, split it up. So I'm extremely happy this morning to be able to present this recognition. In my tenure, this is the second time we've done it. The last time that they were here was in 2017. So I do want to just announce, as my colleague, Council President, said, we have champions in the room. And so we're very, very proud of our students, not only because they're great students, but they're thriving also on the field. And so they received this year the California Community College Athletic Association State Championship Title, like I said, twice in my tenure as I've been here as a council member. They received it in 2017 and then this year. To get to that victory, the Rams ended the year with the state best 21 shout-outs. Isn't that pretty remarkable? 21 shout-outs. I don't know who can do that, but I know that these gentlemen can. Six more than the next closest team while allowing just seven goals all year long. Just seven goals? Jeez.
That was the defensive coach.
That explains it. So amazing job, young men, you know, for representing not only Fresno City College, but also the city of Fresno. That's why we wanted to bring here this morning to acknowledge the work that you guys are doing on the field. We wanted to acknowledge also our coaching staff because it takes an amazing coaching, you know, staff team to be able to get these gentlemen through the season. And so I want to recognize also the coaches. So Coach Solberg, in fact, commanded a presence on his team on the field and still strong work ethic and led them to this year's title. An overall record was 18, 1, and then 7. There was also a special recognition by the United Soccer Coaches, which was awarded to this year's team of coaching staff. They were awarded also the 2019 National College Staff of the Year. So again, it takes a great coaching team and then also great players that are willing to be part of something greater than just yourself. So congratulations on this accomplishment. Congratulations, President, because you can brag, you have bragging rights on your campus. And so just want to commend you guys. Keep up the good work, not only on the field, but as you guys continue in your educational journey, remember that there's a lot more to accomplish. So we're very, very proud of you guys. We have certificates for everyone, but we won't hand them out today. I know that not everyone is here, but I know that you guys are representing your team very proudly. So with that, I'm going to have the clerk read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas on December 8th, 2019, the Fresno City College Men's Soccer Team earned their second California Community College Athletic Association State Championship Title. The FCC Men's Soccer Team previously received its title for the first time after their stellar performance throughout the 2017 season. And whereas head coach Eric Solberg led the FCC Men's Team through the 2019 season with an overall record of 18, 1, 7, the Rams ended the year with the state best 21 shout-outs, six more than the next closest team, and allowing just seven goals all year long. As a result, defenders Angel Alvarado and Pedro Gomez were named co-most valuable players. And whereas the city of Fresno recognizes this accomplishment by the FCC Men's Soccer Team and is proud to be represented in the athletic community throughout California, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno Mayor and City Council congratulates the Fresno City College Men's Soccer Team on this historic win and hereby proclaims January 30th to be Fresno City College Soccer, excuse me, Fresno City College Men's Soccer Team Day in the city of Fresno.
Wait a minute, before you guys leave, I did want to give an opportunity maybe to one of the coaches and one of the players to just say a couple of words.
Thanks for having us here today. It was a great run. It was our 10th time to the state final four and we won it in 17, so we won two of the last three. I think we're like 55 and 4 the last four years. And I'd like to say that it was, we have mediocre players and great coaches, but I think it's the other way around. We've had great players here and that's the key to winning. And we have a lot of guys that are not here and they're in school today, so that's a good thing. So, but it's been a great run. We're hoping to continue it and we'll just keep trying to get it done in the field classroom. So, you want to say something? This is our leader right here.
Morning, good morning. I'd like to say since the beginning of the season, we knew we were going to begin impact for this season. At the end, the finals, we believed in each other so much. We had that work team ethic and we knew it. We believed it. We had all Fresno supporting us and I have to say that it's quite a pleasure to be here in Fresno and we knew we had to represent, so we put our A-game on and we represented. So we're proud to, we're proud to, yeah, to be out here and thank you for congratulating us.
So next up, I will call up the coaching staff first, Coach Paul Quesa, Coach Pepe Mendoza, and Coach Johnny Platas. And then if you, the team members want to come on up as well. So we definitely have champions in this room and so it is exciting and my honor to be able to recognize also these young men that are here with us. They are the Fresno City College Men's Wrestling Team who made history with this year's win. They became the first ever community college team who has won four consecutive state championships. So let's give it up to them. It's a pretty big deal, gentlemen. You guys are leaving your mark at Fresno City College. Very proud of you guys. So seven of the Fresno City College wrestlers advanced to the championship round in six weight classes. Out of those seven wrestlers, four were declared champions. They are Daniel Ruiz. I don't know if they're here. Daniel?
Daniel Ruiz is in La Rara, Iowa, attending school right now.
Ah, okay, awesome. Josh McMillan, Jack, nice Josh, Jack Kilner, and Armando Barcenas. So we want to congratulate all of these young athletes. Your wins are a tribute to the hard work and dedication. So as I said yesterday, earlier today, you really represent not only Fresno City College, but the city of Fresno and we're so proud to be able to recognize you guys this morning and recognize the coaching staff because again, not only does it take great team members, but it takes great coaching staff to get to the levels that you guys are reaching. So I want to congratulate also the coaches and the Coach Paul Quesa has been exemplary 25-year coaching career at the junior college, has led Fresno City teams to nine state titles and 12 overall in his career. So that's pretty awesome and amazing. Yeah, let's give him a round of applause. And then a special recognition was awarded to the assistant coach, George Moreno, who is recognized by the National Wrestling Coaches Association as the California Community College Assistant Coach of the Year. So congratulations to the assistant coach. So we want to thank you guys and again, keep working hard out on the mat, but also make sure that you guys do well in school and continue with your educational journey. Before, I'll change it up a little. I'll let you guys say a couple of words and maybe also can close it up with the college president and then we'll read the proclamation.
Well, first of all, it's an honor to be here and be recognized. It's an honor to be these young men's coach. These guys worked very hard. We had a common goal and were able to succeed. Kind of what Coach Solberg said, I think we have very, we have a lot of talent and some mediocre coaches, but somehow we all need to, somehow we all managed to band together. And in wrestling, we call it free snow. We are extremely proud to be from Fresno and on our warmups, we have a zipper that goes down the middle and the first three letters, F-R-E and then S-N-O. So we refer to those jackets as free snow. And when we wear them, we know that we are representing Fresno and we are extremely proud. So thank you for having us.
Well, I don't got much to say, but I'm just, you know, really grateful to be here on this team. Been here for three seasons and from what I can say from this team is that we're all really close and, you know, with our coaching staff and everything, just I really know that hard work pays off. In these past three years, I can definitely, you know, see what we've done. It all, hard work pays off. That's all I can say.
So both of my coaches are incredibly humble. As you can see, they said that they're, you know, mediocre coaches. I would disagree, not only because are they state champions, which that in itself is a huge, huge accomplishment. And for a president to have two championship teams out of 115 community colleges is an incredible honor. So our coaches are amazing at what they do in terms of being coached, but they also turn young men into great men and to men who understand the importance of teamwork, the importance of honor, the importance of city, the importance of in God we trust. So to my coaches, you are some of the most amazing men. I have an opportunity to work with and I'm incredibly proud. And thank you, Councilwoman, for acknowledging that we represent Fresno well. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas on December 14th, 2019, Fresno City Men's Wrestling Team was declared to be the California Community College Athletic Association State Champions. The FCC Men's Wrestling Team made history with this year's win, becoming the first ever school who has won four consecutive state championships. And whereas Coach Paul Quesa has led Fresno City teams to nine state titles and 12 overall in his 25 years of coaching at the junior college level. And whereas the Fresno City College Rams were tournament hosts and ultimately ended up totaling 186 points, seven FCC wrestlers advanced to the championship round in six weight classes. Out of those seven wrestlers, four were declared champions. They are Daniel Ruiz, Josh McMillan, Jack Kilner, and Armando Barcenas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fresno City, Fresno, city of Fresno Mayor and the city council congratulates the Fresno City College Men's Wrestling Team on a historic win and hereby proclaims January 30th to be Fresno City College Men's Wrestling Team Day in the city of Fresno.
Thank you all. I think it's fair to say that we in the city have great employees and mediocre politicians, so we feel your pain.
Yes, except for the folks who get As by the Chamber of Commerce, of course, the A-students here. Before we move on to ceremonial presentations, I do have one speaker who's requested, Gene Richards. You want to come to the mic? I know you want to speak on the ceremonial items. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Council President. Gene Richards, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Representative for District Three, Council, Mayor, Staff. Have you received this summary of the LAB, League of American Bicyclists Award? Yes? Okay. I wanted to mention a few things. We seem to be stuck, it's a little bit too early to be patting ourselves on the back. We have a lot of work to do if we're going to move out of the bronze category. We seem to be stuck in the bronze. The summary shows what the average silver award accomplished and what Fresno accomplished. A couple of points I'd like to make. The total bicycle network mileage compared to total road network mileage, average silver is forty-eight percent. Fresno's down at eleven percent, which means we have a long way to go. Fresno's got a lot of aspirations in actuality, but we don't have a lot of actuality yet. Key outcomes, ridership, silver two-point-seven percent, Fresno less than point-nine percent. Crashes, silver five-hundred-and-thirty-seven crashes per ten thousand bicycle commuters, Fresno's up at six-hundred-and-fifty. And fatalities, average silver six-point-three for ten thousand commuters, and Fresno's three times that, almost eighteen crashes, fatalities. So, we really need to step up. If we're serious about safety, and we want people to find an alternative to motoring and getting out of the cars and keeping people healthy, then we need to step up and do more. So, hopefully we can work together and do that.
Thank you, Gene.
I have a point of order, Council President. You offered this gentleman two minutes, two weeks ago. It was one minute for the people that came. I thought it's three minutes when people come and speak before us.
On this item, it's not an action item for us. It's a ceremonial presentation, so I'm limited to two minutes, so we can move the meeting along. We also have two other speakers who want to speak on their ceremonial presentations. Thank you for the question, though. Susan and Anthony, you're up next.
I'm the District Seven B-PAC representative for Nelson Esparza, and I just want to say that I do get on a bike every week to do my errands, to do commute and everything. I do notice more and more people riding all over Fresno, and it's really something that I think if you take that scorecard that Gene is sharing with you, to really look at it and continue to build out the network. I live within a half mile of what will be the Midtown Trail, and it doesn't, you know, it needs to get built, because people are on it already, and you need to make it easier and safer. I took Fresno Street to get down here today, all the way from my house, and it's kind of scary, so I'll just tell you that. I do it, but other people are afraid to do it, just like I'm afraid to talk up here. So, now it's Tony's turn. Thank you.
We preserve the balance of our time. Hi, I'm Tony Molina, and I am the outgoing chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'm representing Michael Carbosty, and I want to thank all of you for your support for bicycling and pedestrian safety, and especially for the recent Safe Routes to School initiative there, too. So, I also want to stress that we would, B-PAC members are very anxious to meet with you and discuss our report card and what we can all do together to try to get to silver, so we look forward to meeting with you soon. One of the things that's highlighted on there is the need for a dedicated active transportation coordinator position, that we'll be talking to you more about that in the near future. So, we look forward to working with you on that initiative. Also, I also want to, as the outgoing president, I wanted to introduce our new chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Phil Arbayo, and so you can look forward to working with him. And I would also like to invite all of you to join us for our upcoming May is Bike Month ride to City Hall, which we, I would look forward to working with you as well. So, with that, thank you all, and let's get to silver. So, I appreciate your help. Thanks. Let's get the gold, yes, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for the encouragement and the concerns. Now, we're moving on to council member reports and comments. Do any council members want to be recognized? Councilmember Esparza?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to talk a little bit about a couple of town halls that I held, had last week with my constituents. We are working in tandem with the administration as well as getting input from constituents on Parking District Number Ten, which is the VA Parking District. And so, for those constituents who attended and took the time to come to one of the two sessions last week, I want to thank all those folks, as well as the Parking Director, Thomas Graffry, for tagging along and, you know, meeting people in the district to answer their questions and receive their input. So, I want to thank all parties involved as we move toward some potential amendments that I think will hopefully improve the quality of life there for the residents of the parking districts. Other thing last week, because I had the privilege of being invited to speak to the new cohort of Maddy interns, the Maddy Institute over at Fresno State. I want to welcome my new Maddy intern to my office, her name is Esther, as well as all of the others who are placed across legislative offices here at City Hall and across Fresno.
Thank you, councilman. Any other councilmembers wish to be recognized? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Next is the consent calendar. Would any councilmembers like to pull item for discussion on the consent calendar? Councilmember Chavez?
Not pulling any item, just, I'm going to recuse myself on item one E, just for a potential conflict. Thanks.
So noted. Councilmember Betterfield?
Yes, I'd like to pull item one E, one P. And I'd like to register a no vote on one Q.
So, we are registering the no vote on one Q and pulling the two remaining items.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Esparza?
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself on item one N, as in Nelson, for a potential conflict of interest.
The recuso is noted for Councilmember Esparza on one N, as Nelson or Nancy. Councilmember Soria? No other items wishing to be pulled?
No. Council President?
Yes.
Sorry. I want to register a no vote on item one Q, please.
It is so noted. Register no vote for Councilmember Carbosty on item one Q. Would any member of the public wish to speak on any of the consent items? I do have a card from Mr. Yones on one E. We can hear you now, or we can hear you when we discuss the item? Okay. With that, the screen is clear from council members. There's a motion to approve the remainder of the consent, seconded by Member Nelson Esparza. All those in favor? Any opposition? Nope, except for the noted no votes on the consent items. Okay, now we're going to go to the pulled items. One E, Councilmember Betterfield, you have the floor.
Yes, there's staff here.
They're on their way right now.
Shall we go to the next one, Councilmember, or they come?
If you would, they'll be here in just moments.
Well, then, we're going to be spending a little more time on one P. We might want to wait a moment.
You want to wait?
Yeah.
All right, we'll wait a moment. While we're waiting, we will take the public speaker on item one E. You want to come up, Mr. Yones? And this is an action item, so you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Yonas Palos. As you can see, my face has changed, okay? I have melpazolam from stress. I deal with a lot of death. We need, I want to tell you, thank you for the temporary shelters. Look how cold it was yesterday. Thank you, Miguel. Thank you, Esmeralda. That's day in and day out, including our veterans, they're suffering with their PTSD. And that young lady you spoke with, she was in a hospital last night on a wheelchair with seizures. So, these are the stories, okay? If nothing touches you, these are human beings. We build shelters for animals. I don't have nothing against them, but let's get these human beings some help, too, okay? And we're seeing success on the CAP shelter, okay? Seventeen people just got employed. So, Des Martinez, I thank God I met somebody that is doing something on the ground beside myself, and I'm glad to meet her. She really, we really care about these people. They are humans like you and I, and we really need this employment, because a lot of them, including my veterans, they need employment so they can come back, okay? Take this at faith value. My faith drives me every day, and I love what I do. And I ran into homelessness like a sprint because I'm a winner, okay? Anybody, ask Jaime Ramirez in Fresno Pacific. I'm a true sunbird living, and I know what the meaning of the sunbird is, is giving back to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Betterfield, you have the floor.
Couple of questions, H. So, on the program, why is it that the people who will be employed work three weeks on and one week off?
I think they're looking at cohorts of individuals, and to tell you the truth, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. I mean, this is about employment, and I read that, which I support, I mean, we want to help them, but it's...
Yeah, great question.
Three weeks, three weeks on, one week off, thirty-five weeks on, thirteen weeks off. Does anybody know?
Well, the EOC has a format for doing this. One of the reasons that they were chosen is that they've been successful at working with folks that are doing reentry from prison, that they are, they've worked with folks that are at risk for employment in the past. So, we took them at their word, that we were more concerned about the outcomes, that they actually have individuals who are homeless and who are moving through not just to this employment, but onto permanent employment and to permanent housing. So, the goal of this project is to get folks into an employment stream, get them off the streets, and into society.
Okay, I understand that.
We took them, we took them at their word. They have a good track record with other folks, and so we, that's why we accepted them.
So, is there any way EOC can be here to answer? Oh, okay, great. Fantastic.
Did you hear the question? Okay, great.
Hi, so I'm going to try to answer that a little bit. My name is Missy Gatti Blanco. I'm the sanctuary director. And so, we're working in conjunction with our local conservation corps. We're actually looking at maybe changing that a little bit to four weeks, but it's kind of, because it's a pilot project, we're really going to see how that works. Because it is our homeless population, we want to be able to maintain contact with them and make sure that they're still continuing to come. Sometimes if you extend it too long, we lose some of that momentum, and we also don't want to inhibit anything else that they're trying to do. We're looking at disability, so we're kind of playing with it. It is a pilot project, and so I think instead of the three weeks, we're looking at four weeks at least, and then maybe extending that a little bit more with them as well.
Okay. I mean, we are trying to help them become employed, people who are employed work every day, you know, Monday through Friday, and so that's why I was, you know, caught my eye when it's three weeks on, one week off.
That's currently how they work with their program now, with the reentry. It's three weeks on, one week off, instead of just inundating them with a full-time, you know, here's all these hours. So, we're going to be working with that. In addition to that work, we're also going to be helping them with the supportive services side and making sure that they're not only in the shelters or getting into the shelters, but also getting into that permanent housing as well.
Okay. And then, just finally, you came up with percentages. Twenty-five percent of the clients will secure permanent or stable housing. Thirty percent will secure part-time or full-time employment. How did you come up with thirty, twenty-five? You've got eighty percent will be matched to and approved for a housing program, and these are just goals. You don't know that you'll meet these, these are the standards you're standing for yourself.
Right. So, part of the reason for some of these numbers is we do currently have housing projects. The wait time to get into an actual apartment is pretty lengthy right now, what we're seeing. And so, knowing that this is only a seventeen-month project, we don't want to set, you know, ourself too high and then not be able to attain those. Being matched isn't an issue. I think that that will take place, and probably more than, close to a hundred percent will be matched, but it's, can they get into that apartment by the time this is done and us be able to report that out to you and the state?
Great. Be happy to support it, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Member Betterfield, seconded by Member Soria. Any opposition? Before we finish, okay, actually, we already went to public comment. So, the next item is item... No, he didn't sign up.
I don't have your name here.
On this item? Come on up.
Oh, not on this item.
Okay, we're not under a schedule yet. Did you sign up for this item?
I did.
Come on on really quick.
I did have a question, just because someone had asked, Randy, seven thirteen East San Juiz Avenue. Someone asked me, so I thought, since I'm here, I'd ask what the methodology was with...
Randy, direct your questions this way.
Sorry. What the methodology was with finding the outreach to finding employers, the people to employ.
We can have you meet with EOC and HB, so he can go through the details of the design for you. Thank you.
This is a great program. Thank you so much.
Now to the next item, one P, as in Paul. Councilmember Betterfield, you pulled the item. You have the floor.
Yes, this, this item is a significant item, and I think it's obviously in relation to what took place two weeks ago, which I don't think was a shining moment at City Hall. We were discussing CCWs and law-abiding citizens being able to exercise, continue to exercise their right at City Hall, where they come in with their concealed weapons and never have had a problem, but the mayor and I guess other council members felt it was better to disarm them. And so, for me, I disagreed with that, and it led to a very heated discussion where there were several efforts to curtail me from speaking out in support of those folks. One was by the city manager to ask the chief of police, who was behind the, or proposed ordinance, by asking him...
Point of order, sorry, there's only three of us in the room. So, do we have to stop discussion until there's a quorum?
Yes. The council rules provide, unless it's a noticed public hearing, which this is not, you can continue. You just can't vote unless there's a majority here.
Well, do you want to continue with that?
No, I think, this is a pretty important thing related to the First Amendment. I appreciate what you're saying. I'm not sure why everyone has left the building or the room.
So, if Council President is not here, the Vice President is not here, then we move down the order of rotation.
Oh, there we are.
Okay. Okay. So, as I was saying, the council, the city manager interrupted my questioning of the police chief, asked him to sit down and not respond to my questions, which I objected to, and thankfully, the police chief did not adhere to her request. Secondly, I had a colleague who tried to limit my debate to ninety seconds, or my comments to ninety seconds. Thankfully, that didn't get a second. And then, lastly, the... And then lastly, the council president tried to get videos that I was showing stopped, as well as tried to restrict my questions to a few questions, which I refused to adhere to. So in an effort now to further restrict everyone, because everyone will be affected by these rules that are being, these rule changes that are being proposed, everyone's First Amendment rights, as well as your ability to represent your constituents and address issues, will be restricted, which is not going to fly with me. So I want to go through what these proposed rule changes are, and I hope the council will, will address this and frankly, remove these, because it will adversely affect your ability, as well as my ability, to represent our constituents, to speak freely about very important issues that face our city. And we should do everything we can to always call out efforts to censor speech and restrict it. The first proposed rule change is, rule changes on number six, and it says, "No presentation materials, not in compli," oh, let me read what it is right now. "All matters to be included on the agenda and all supporting documents, including PowerPoint presentations, shall be submitted to the council president and city clerk by 5:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting." That's the rule that exists now. I have no problem with that. Then here's the rule change. "No presentation materials not in compliance with this rule shall be accepted for presentation at a council meeting unless prior approval is granted by the council president or as may be approved by five votes of the council at the council meeting." Now, why is this problematic? It's problematic because we submit materials the week before this council meeting. So today, we have a council meeting. We had to submit materials last Thursday by five o'clock. No problem, except that from five o'clock last Thursday is a whole week until the presentation, until we meet today. Now, I have constituents who come and talk to me, present me information. We do research. We get additional data. There are videos that come up. There are charts that we want to present. And I'm not going to ask anybody here for permission to present information to address any issue that somebody brings here, because that's what this is about. This is about presenting information and making the best decisions. So right now, if this rule chain goes into effect, any material that isn't submitted a week from, a week earlier, can't be presented here as it's expressed here. So that's...
Do you want to make an amendment right now to that?
I make a motion to eradicate that. It's removed. Did you second that?
Yes.
Okay.
To be clear, counsel.
Yes.
You're removing the additional materials that are shown here, not the entire rule?
No, not the entire rule. I have no problem presenting information because it needs to be part of the agenda. But anything that isn't included, I'm still going to present if I need to present it. I'm not asking permission to present it. That's understood. So that's the second. Do you want to go, I mean, city attorney, should we go through each rule change and make a motion or not make a motion? How best to proceed here?
Councilmember Betterfield, you have the floor, so if you want to go item by item or section by section, that's your freedom to do so.
Do you, shall we do a motion on each one, or?
It's really up to you. I think it would be clearer if there's a motion on each one.
Okay, fine, fair enough. Okay, so let's move on then to page ten. It's rule number ten, letter D, 3D, 3D on page ten. Okay, it says that speakers shall confine their remarks to those which are relevant to the subject under consideration and are encouraged to present new evidence and points of view not previously considered to avoid repetition of statements made by previous speakers. That's in there as a rule. I don't think we've ever mandated that of people. We should not mandate that of people. I understand we want to move things along. But I want to be clear that anybody who comes before this council when we have presentations on a heated issue or non-heated issue, they have three minutes, unless we restrict it because of a lot of people, to express whatever point of view they want, whether it's new information or not new information. That's their First Amendment right. Now, the rule change you have here is that this is a time for speakers to make their remarks, not ask questions or engage with officials on the dais. Nonetheless, if speakers do have questions, council may direct that a staff member meet with the speaker following the speaker's remarks. Now, this rule is saying that a person coming before the council can't ask a council member a question. And I have a problem with that. We have experienced many times where the public comes, asks a specific council member a question, and this says that basically they will be, that person will be instructed to talk with a staff member. I don't want to be so restrictive that we, as council members, can't address questions that are asked of us by the public. And so I'd like to know your thoughts on that, because I don't want to be so restrictive that people can't ask us questions. I mean, that's why we're here.
So Councilmember Betterfield, if I may.
Yes.
This language simply clarifies our current practice and our current rule, that if you speak to us under unscheduled oral, that you can address a council, but it's not an opportunity for us to go back and forth with any council members on any items that are not related. This is, if you want to answer questions of your constituents, you can sidebar, you can meet with them. But when you address a council for three minutes, it's not a back and forth. And the reason that is, is because we're limited to discuss things on the agenda. If somebody wants to come to us and ask us about a contract that was approved two months ago, and we get into a back and forth, and there's expectation from the public that we're going to give them answers either to something not on the agenda or something that's not for the public consumption, like a closed session item, this just clarifies that three minutes of unscheduled oral communication is an opportunity for the public to address us, not for us to go back and forth.
This is also scheduled.
Correct.
Scheduled and unscheduled.
So like, we just had a constituent ask questions about the details of a contract. It's, if it's more appropriate for staff to answer those questions, we redirect them to staff to answer those questions. It is not necessary for us individually to get into a back and forth debate with individual members of the public on any particular item.
And I agree with, I agree with what you just said. We don't want to go back and forth, but I don't want to restrict people who want to raise a question of a council member that they can't do that.
I understand. This simply clarifies the current rule and the current practice so that there is a clear expectation for the public and for the council on how we operate. Thank you. This is now time for the council to have the discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Carr, but we can stay on this if you want to.
On this issue, first of all, Councilmember Betterfield, I really appreciate you fighting for the First Amendment. This is a bipartisan issue, and that means a lot. Can we maybe make a little compromise here to make everyone happy and protect the First Amendment by creating a new E, city attorney, where we'll make it specific to items that aren't on the agenda? Would that make it? So you're saying this applies to items on the agenda, but Councilmember Betterfield's concerned it'll affect...
Yeah, but this is also scheduled. It says scheduled and unscheduled communication.
So Councilmember Carr, before you make references to the violation of First Amendment, I want to clarify that none of this violates the First Amendment. So let's be cautious with that language. Legal counsel, did you want to...
Let me clarify. I was not accusing anybody of not supporting the First Amendment. I'm just applauding a colleague who made it very clear he supports the First Amendment. That's all I'm doing. Please don't take offense to that.
And to be clear, what we're talking about is a section under scheduled and unscheduled communication. That's not the agendized council items. That's, in other words, that's a member of the public says, "I want to come in and discuss so-and-so, such-and-such." This is not for the regular agenda items. That's, in other words, what this section is about.
So to clarify, counsel, this is when a member of the public is asked to be placed on the agenda to discuss a specific item or when they're asking to address this under unscheduled oral communication.
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So I'm just going, we'll leave it at that. I just wanted to be clear that if somebody comes and asks, and we get this all the time, "I'm in your district. I have a question about this." We're going to let people do that. How we handle that in terms of maybe directing a staff, not a problem. We don't want to get into a back and forth. I concur with that point of view. Okay, next, if we can move on to rule number twelve, on page twelve. This initially discusses some unruly behavior, which is fine, no problem, but the change here is, this is the change. Graphic or potentially offensive images, video or discussion shall be preceded by a disclaimer, allowing for sensitive or objecting individuals to exit for that portion of the presentation. See also rule twenty-two. So last week, I presented a video. And I want to play twenty-five seconds of that, because the objection was that people didn't, some here didn't like the video because it was graphic. Now, it was showing a maniac shooting school board members. Didn't hit them, didn't show anybody getting hit because nobody did get hit. But it was a news broadcast. It was sent out to the news for people to see. Just, I want to show the twenty-five seconds.
Clay Duke had planned the attack at the school board building for some time. In his trailer, they found yesterday's date circled on a calendar. Now, a word of caution. Some of the following video may be disturbing.
Okay. Now, the objection was that we should have had a disclaimer. There was a disclaimer right there on the video that I presented. The reality was, there were people who didn't like the video. And so there was a disclaimer. This was a news broadcast. And so that's where the violation took place. The issue was, I don't like the video, should have had a disclaimer. There was one. I wanted to point that out. Now, as for graphic or potentially offensive images, I share that point of view. If there is something that's difficult for people to see, we want people to know. But I think we need to be very careful in terms of labeling certain things that are offensive, because what I might find offensive, somebody else might not find offensive, and vice versa. Generally speaking, I don't have any problem if there is something that's difficult doing that. But that was done two weeks ago, and we got to be careful that we don't try to restrict people just because we don't like what we're witnessing. Rule twenty-two. This is related to questions of order and appeals to rulings of chair. Now, the change is this. If any council member believes something inappropriate is occurring during a meeting, the remedy is to raise a point of order. A point of order may interrupt the current speaker, and upon raising such a question, any speech or presentation occurring at that time shall be paused until the issue is resolved. However, absent a council member raising a point of order, no one shall be permitted to interrupt a council member. So the problem I have with this is, how are we defining inappropriate? If a council member believes something inappropriate is occurring, then they can raise a point of order and interrupt the council member. Who's defining inappropriate? What does that mean?
Well, counsel, first of all, the rule read before, it didn't even have any qualification on when you could raise a point of order. It was just a blanket ability to do so. This narrows it somewhat. Inappropriate could cover a number of things. It could be something illegal, something not in compliance with the rules. It could be something even, you want to go to lunch, and we've gone too long into the lunch hour. If you wanted a further definition of inappropriate, we could substitute instead something illegal or not in compliance with the rules. Possibly that would be another way to say it.
Yeah, I think you need to say something much more than inappropriate, because...
By the way, we have a rule for that, too.
I assume he's been warned?
He's now no longer allowed back in. Security, make sure he does not, doesn't come back in.
Okay, so inappropriate is wide-ranging. It can be, I find what is being said inappropriate. That is the wrong term. I mean, that's just too broad, nondescript, and can cover anything practically. So yes, there has to be some clarification of what that means, because otherwise, anybody can raise any objection saying they feel what's occurring is inappropriate.
An option would be to substitute illegal or in violation of these rules, rather than inappropriate.
Counsel, I do have a question. This is a section that currently, if, I'll use Member Sparsa as an example. He's an economics professor. If he's giving us our dissertation on Economics 101, and we've been here, it's one o'clock, and skip lunch, any council member has the right to call for a point of order and maybe call for the question for us to vote on the item, and therefore conclude the conversation. If five members of this body, the supermajority, agreed to it, then we call for the vote and we move on.
Yeah, but here's my point of view. If he's presenting a presentation and it's taking an hour, while I might not want to be there for the hour, he has the right to do it. That's his right. That's his role. That's his responsibility. If his constituents don't like that he spends an hour doing it, they'll vote him out or something else. I don't want to restrict your speech or your speech on any item. That is why we're here.
Councilmember Chavez, you have the floor.
I think the intent, Councilmember Betterfield, and you're right, that definition of inappropriate is so vague. But what I think the intent of this is that not one single council member monopolizes the time of this body. And so if you're making the same argument over and over, and it's been settled, I mean, it's also not fair to hold this whole council when we're having the same conversation. So I think there needs to be some parameters around what that definition is, but at the end of the day, it's about decorum. We all have to be respectful of each other. Yes, it's your time to speak, but it's this council's time as a body as well. And so we can't codify common courtesy. And so I would expect that from every single one of my colleagues here to say, hey, we've made our point. We kind of know where things are going. Let's not keep beating a dead horse. But at the end of the day, that's going to be the individual council member's decision. And so there has to be a mechanism in place to say, all right, we've heard this argument. We, you know, talked it over. I think we know where the council's at, and then keep moving. Otherwise, if we don't have anything in there, there's one council member that can essentially filibuster for the whole night, and that's not fair either.
Where does that happen, Councilmember Chavez?
It hasn't, and I think that's why we write rules, so that it does not happen. But if we adopt rules today, and for some reason that's happening, and the council member feels like they're not being heard, I'm more than willing and open to revise these and make sure that that doesn't happen, because I want you to give your side of the story. I hope you want to hear mine as well, but I will always be respectful of the time of the body as a whole. And it's a balance between an individual's right and then the collective right as well. So I hope we can keep that conversation in the context here today for this conversation.
And I share, I share your point of view, Councilman Chavez. Absolutely agree with you. But what you said, we can't codify being respectful. We need to let people express their points of view. And I asked you, where does it happen? It hasn't happened. So why are we creating something that can lead to a problem when somebody disagrees with what somebody's saying? Or they feel like, hey, we beat a dead horse, but there's, somebody else may feel like there's something that needs to be added or addressed. I think we're treading on dangerous ground, and I think we are potentially restricting people's rights to express themselves, particularly when we've not had the problem. And when you have it open-ended with inappropriate, you're setting the stage for a problem.
If that would ever happen on this dais, and I felt that you were not being listened to, I'd be the first one to say something about it. I hope we have that type of relationship up here on the dais.
Well, and with all due respect, I think two weeks ago, we witnessed it happening, and it wasn't handled well.
Councilmember Betterfield.
Yes.
Member Sparsa, punch step, please.
Yeah, just to chime in here, and, you know, I was one of the colleagues that you referred to in terms of trying to kind of expedite the, the meeting last week. Yeah, I'm supportive of this portion of the rule changes, only because my intention was efficiency of the meeting. And I think in terms of the agenda, we had really only gotten through, we had dug into only one, besides the consent agenda, we'd really only dug into one public item. So, you know, my attempt there was not to censor you or any of the folks who would come to speak. That's not going to be my intention going forward. The intention has always been about the efficiency and just ensuring that we don't, you know, take up half of the meeting with, with one item. And I think, I mean, this has more or less been the rules, and I think we've all been thus far very respectful of each other and not, and provided the sort of due time that everybody is, has asked for. But I think five people is a large threshold. I mean, that's, you know, notwithstanding yourself, that's five people, right? Five folks who were elected by the good people here in Fresno. If five can come together and say, well, this has to stop, or, you know, we have to move on here. It's been three hours or four hours in this item, I think that's a reasonable threshold to meet, and I think that's a hard threshold to meet. And so if, if there was an unreasonable request, I want to, you know, allegedly censor somebody or cut things short, again, five people is, it really is a high threshold.
Well, again, appreciate your comment, but if we go back to last week, we spent two hours in a closed session before we ever came out to the public. So they patiently waited for two minutes. Then we came out here, and then unilaterally restricted them to one minute to talk, when they should have had three minutes to talk, because the rule is three minutes to talk unless there's twenty or more people. So their, their right to speak on this issue was violated, and we kept them waiting for two hours. So I mean, I think that's the perspective. And again, we haven't had the issue, so why are we creating a problem and leaving it so nebulous? nebulous with inappropriate? It's setting a stage for a potential problem that we have not had.
So, Councilmember, I would just add a couple of points. One is, one of the things that we reviewed from last meeting is that there's a lot of practices that we have in place that are not codified in the rule. So, this has been the practice of allowing folks to interrupt each other and call for the question. And if five members agree to call for the question, then we call for the question. Secondly, I get, in my first meeting, I get requests from colleagues to have their item heard before lunch, because we're typically an hour, two hours behind schedule, because these debates are going for long periods of time. In order for me to honor councilmembers' requests to hear an item that was scheduled for 10:30, and there's developers and constituents who've been waiting for two hours before the lunch break, we have to have some way to gently and respectfully conclude an item so we can move on to the next item. So, this simply codifies our ability to bring closure to an item that's been discussed significantly, and allows us to move the meeting efficiently. If not, we're going to be here till midnight on most days, because, as you know, we shrunk the amount of meetings for the year, so they're getting heavier. The last meeting that we had, the binders were literally this big of backup material. So, at some point, we have to codify these practices into rules. And this isn't about the content of your speech, or anybody's speech. It's about allowing the supermajority of this body to conclude the discussion on an item, and move on to the next item in a manner that's organized, respectful, and everybody understands the rules of engagement.
Okay, so, the fact is, we don't stay here till midnight. And the fact is, however long it's supposed to take to hear items, we should be prepared to do that. We meet twice a month. We should meet three or four times a month. And we don't go till midnight. So, these are all false arguments about how long we are here. And if somebody's got a meeting before lunch, well, perhaps they shouldn't have a meeting before lunch. All of their energies should be put here. So, these are all bogus arguments. The fact is, we should be able to address for as long as needed any policy issue. If we need to be meeting more, then let's meet more. Twice a month, as far as I'm concerned, is not enough.
We had Councilmember Soria, and then Carbossi. Carbossi, I think she'd hand it off to you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. I'm open to changing our rules as necessary to make this body function better. But I don't see the fire. I mean, where's the fire on this particular rule? If there's one thing I wish we can do, "under in God we trust" is put up there. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. So, I have to agree on this particular motion. I mean, Councilmember Chavez is correct. The word inappropriate needs to be defined better, but I think we should let this one go.
Councilmember Soria?
We're talking about the rule that allows us to make a motion through a point of order to interrupt the speaker, and we would hear the point of order motion before the speaker continues to speak.
This is a question for city attorney. Can this be done if it's not in the rule?
Well, and actually, if you look at the existing rule, the existing rule includes the sentence that is stricken out. It said, "A question of order may be raised at any stage of the proceeding, except when you're voting." So, it was there without any qualification whatsoever.
So, it can be done without, if we...
In other words, so this narrows the circumstances in which a point of order could be raised. But yes, absent changing this rule, a question of order, a point of order, could be raised.
So, in fact, if we change it back to the original, it's much broader, and we can do it at any point?
Yeah, the way the rule...
Okay, so, I would make a motion to do that, and it just be very clear that we can actually do that at any point. That was my understanding. I've been working in this body for five years. I thought that we had the power and authority. So, in fact, it's broader. I can do it whenever I want, as long as I have the support of my colleagues.
All right.
That should be clear.
That was essentially the existing rule.
And actually, it's broader, so we have more power to be able to try to end debate at any point. So, I'll move to, back to the original.
All right, we'll second that, and we'll go back to the original rule, which is far more broad.
Okay, do we have to, okay, I mean, do you have to vote on that, or...
I assume you're going to accumulate these motions.
We're going to go one by one after we're done.
And Councilmember Soria? I will support that, because inappropriate is just a vague term. So, I have no problem with that. We go to 22C. This is a new rule change, and my problem is at the end of it. It says, "The speech, questioning, or presentation of a council member may only be limited to these rules by a motion to limit debate. A motion to limit debate, if made, seconded, and approved by at least five votes of the council, may alter the rules of debate, as may be specified in the motion. For example, the motion may alter or set a maximum time for debate on an issue. Limit the time each council member may speak, or such other limitation as may be specified. However, such a motion shall not be based on the content of any speech, other than being a clear violation of these rules, perspective, or person who is anticipated to be speaking, and preferably, preferably, that's my problem, should be made prior to commencement of debate on an issue." Now, city attorney, when you talk about limiting debate, that is done before the discussion is even started. Is that correct?
That would be the preferred option, in the sense that if it's done during the debate, it's more likely someone would view that as content-based restriction. If the motion to limit debate occurs before the discussion even begins, I think it's less likely that it would appear to be content-based.
Okay, but when you have the word "preferably" in here, I think it needs to be eradicated. The fact is, we should determine the rules before there's a discussion, not in the middle of the discussion, because it leads to this very potential problem, that we're stopping it because of what's going on during the discussion, rather than before.
Yes, I think it would be, it would be less likely to have an as-applied sort of challenge if that were the case, yes. If you establish the rules before beginning the debate.
So, Councilmember, am I hearing you correctly, that you just want us to limit the debate before the item starts?
Yes. I think that's the legal, less of a violation on your First Amendment rights. You can talk about a limitation of debate. I caution the council about limiting debate. I mean, I think it's potentially problematic when we want to start limiting debate before we even have a debate. I'm not sure what circumstances we would want to do that. Again, you keep alluding to with time factors, but I think we're supposed to be here regardless of the time, and people come to have this debate. So, I would definitely remove "preferably" out of there, and just caution the council about limiting debate at all.
So, if I'm hearing you, you have a motion to amend this section to indicate that we will vote to limit debate before the item is heard?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
So, instead of "preferably should," it should say "shall"?
Shall. Yep, that's clear.
Can I ask a point of clarification on that, please? If I may?
Go ahead.
So, if we are in the middle of a discussion, and someone calls for the vote, is that limiting debate?
Yes, calling the question is essentially the same as a motion to limit debate. In other words, a motion to limit debate is very broad, but that would be one example of it, yes.
So, would this impact my ability to say, I'll call for the question if I want to move on?
Yes, it would. You would need to establish the rules of debate before you begin the debate.
Yeah, so, I don't know if I, I'd rather have the flexibility to be able to call for the question at any point, rather than at the front end.
With that clarification, I would draw my second, because this essentially undoes the previous agreement we just had, which was a motion, a point of order can be called at any time.
This is different than, this would be a subset of a point of order. This is an example. And even though you've always, under Roberts' rules, had the ability to call the question or motion to limit debate, I don't recall it ever being done. When in the middle of a debate, somebody said, "Call the question," and there was a vote, got five votes, and then you called for the question, limiting anybody else from speaking on that topic. It's usually been by consensus. Somebody said, "Call the question, unless there was an objection," then you go ahead and do it.
Member Carbossi? And then Chavez.
Clarifying questions to the attorney. First of all, to the public, I'm sorry, you guys have fallen asleep. This is boring stuff, but we got to get through it. A quick question. So, call the question, that's fine. We've been, we've allowed that, and that requires a supermajority, five of the seven votes, correct?
That is a form of motion to limit debate, and would take five votes, yes.
Now, let's say we went ahead last week and seconded the motion to limit debate. Would we be in violation of the First Amendment rights by the law?
I think it depends on the context. If it appears in the context that the motion is directed at limiting the content of somebody's speech, then it would be a problem.
So, if we do it on the front end, we establish those rules early, that's just safer and makes us less liable?
Correct. And it doesn't have to be, it could be the total time of debate, we're going to debate this for three hours, or we're going to stop at 5:00 P.M. There could be a variety of ways of limiting debate.
But it creates a level playing field, essentially.
Yes, correct. It's less likely to be construed as content-based or person-based if the rules are established ahead of time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez, you have the floor.
Yeah, I actually do like the motion that Councilmember Betterfield made, because I think the expectations, like, we would actually outline what the expectation of time would be beforehand, and I would hope that that would prompt the council member presenting to limit their, not limit, but actually allocate the time appropriately. So, I'd be, I would be open to that if you, I'll second that motion. But here's what I'll say, and this is the last thing I'll say, because we really do need to move on before somebody calls a point of order on me. The last thing I'll say is, even with all the rules that we have, Councilmember Betterfield, as you saw last week, when it was pretty apparent that you were the only one that was moving in that direction, and the council had spoke, nobody censored you, even when the motion was made. We all allowed you to speak. And I would hope that even within these rules, that we would give each other the common courtesy of letting every single member of this body present their point of view. That's what I would hope for this. And a perfect example of that was last meeting, when you were allowed to speak, even though I think everybody knew how the vote was going to fall. So, I just ask for our colleagues to, again, it's about decorum, let's be respectful, and more importantly, respect this institution and this body, because to me, that is at the heart of what we do here for the city. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Betterfield, is that all the items?
Yeah, I believe, and then just the, being clear about the time people are allowed to speak. My understanding is, everyone is allowed to speak for three minutes, unless there's, I believe, 20 or more people, then you can restrict the time. And so, I've noticed, you know, last week, you know, people came, there was less than 20, they were given one minute. And that's because, you know, the council was in closed session for two hours before they got there. And I don't think that was fair to the people who came here.
Councilmember Soria?
From my recollection, from how we've been operating in the last five years, the discretion is up to the president. That's kind of one of the rules. If we want to override the president in how he is running the meeting, then we can take a vote and say, we need to give these individuals more time. But I think that as, that we should also respect the role as a president to set the rules ahead of time. If you want to run a tight ship and want to just one minute, you know, I say, let it be. If we want to change that, because we don't like that, then we can take a vote and say, hey, people should be given more time. I think that we should respect that as the role of the president, in my opinion. I did it when I was the president. We've allowed every other council president to have that discretion. I think that if it's an important subject, and you would want to call someone, want to make sure that folks get five minutes each or whatnot, then that's your prerogative to ask this body to take a vote to give people that more time than what the president has allotted.
Our rules, though, specifically say that people have three minutes. That's not discretionary. It's not up to the council president. I agree with you that we've addressed that at times, when there, you know, 100 people here, of course. But last week, unilaterally, people just got one minute, and there was no discussion about it, and there was less than 20 people. And so, I think we should follow the rule. People should have the three minutes, unless, you know, we have the chamber filled with people, and we want everybody to get to speak. It should be three minutes. That's the way it ought to be.
Well, counsel, on that rule, the rule actually says, yes, the public gets three minutes to comment on council items. And then, if it's expected, there will be 20 or more speakers, the council president can shorten the time to a reasonable time. It also says in the council rules that any ruling of the council president can be overruled by the council majority.
Yep. I would agree with my colleagues that we should leave the rule as it exists, and give the council president the flexibility to manage the meeting, especially given that my colleagues here are always asking for certain items to be expedited, put in front of the line, accommodated for people who are in the audience. And just as a reminder, at the last meeting, we had over 100 high school students here. It was the first day of metal detectors. We had an item that had been advertised for approximately a month in the airways and social media and email blast, and we expected a lot of people. I don't know how many people we actually get into the cards show up. So, my expectation is to set a clear expectation for the speakers, so that they know that they have a minute or two or three minutes, while at the same time balancing the individual demands and requests from colleagues who want to have their item heard before the lunch break. And I would just remind you also that, even though we say we have lunch until, from 12 to 1:30, we also get requests from this body to push lunch to 2:00, when we're still in this room at 12:00 or 12:15 or 12:30. So, it's a challenging process, and I no longer envy Councilmember Capriolo for managing the activities up here. And for the next person who's going to be responsible, they'll find that it is a challenge to manage all the competing priorities.
Okay, and one final comment, we can move on. On this about motion to limit debate, I'm going to support this with the provision that it will be done before any discussion, but I want to caution the council that we rarely have ever used this, because it should, there should be no effort to truly limit debate. This ought to be if we have a council chamber full of people, and we don't want it to go seven hours. Other than that, there should be no limits on any debate. And so, it requires five votes, but I hope really, we never utilize it.
All right. Before we take any action on these amendments, is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak on this item? I'm sorry, here you go. I got Member Soria first. Okay. Member Carbossi?
Just a clarification from the city attorney. If council, we adopt this new rule that they're compromising, and if Councilmember Sorio or I want to call the question, you're saying we can't do that anymore?
That would be correct, unless you've established a rule ahead of time of that, hearing that item to allow for that. Calling the question is a form of motion to limit debate. Because you are cutting off debate in doing that.
Well, is there a way that we can have a rule that says, at any time, inconsistent with Roberts' rules, I know we don't follow Roberts' rules always, but we can call the question?
We already have that rule in Section A. If we go back to the rule that's currently in place, correct?
Well, in A, that is a, making a point of order. In other words, when can you interrupt a speaker, and for what purpose? This is more specific in dealing with motions to limit debate. And remember that, in addition to Roberts' rules, we have First Amendment issues here. And we have to be cautious that even in implementation of clear rules, they're not used to, they're not content-based restrictions. In other words, because somebody doesn't like what's being said, they want to limit debate or call the question. We have to be very cautious of that, too.
Okay, and then, lastly, without putting either of you on the spot for the city attorney or the city clerk, you both fall under the council. I don't want a situation where staff is put in a very uncomfortable or difficult position, because I can say, I want you to do this. My Councilmember Betterfield can say, I want you to do that. And then, of course, the chair will say, this is what we do. We need to make it very clear how things are going to run.
That's why having a clear rule in advance is preferable.
Thank you.
So, city attorney, by leaving the word "preferably" in the last amendment that they motioned for, by leaving the word "preferably," we would override the amendment, the previous amendments, to be able to call the question?
Leaving the word "preferably" would allow for a motion to limit debate during the debate, with the caution that that should still never be used if it's a content-based motion.
But our concern was that the previous, previous amendments to ensure that we can still call for the question. And if we were to pass this last motion made, that would eliminate our ability to call for the question.
Yes, because calling the question is a motion to limit debate. So, it's a form of motion to limit debate. So, you can decide, do you want it to be, you have to establish the rules ahead of time, or do you want to still allow for calling the question during the debate taking place? or do you want to still allow for calling the question during the debate taking place?
So, legal counsel, just for clarity, if we approve the rule as currently written, we're still, we would still be allowed to interrupt and call for the question?
Correct, with the understanding that calling the question is not because of the content of the speech that's taking place.
Of course. Of course, it's for the efficiency of the meeting to move to the next item. All right. So is everyone clear on that? All right. So we're going to take one item at a time. We have a motion and a second to remove or edit Section E, is that correct, Councilmember Betterfield?
I think the motion was to reject the change.
Correct, to reject the change. So any opposition to that? Section E. 6E. Page 4E, as in Edward. Motion made by Member Betterfield, second by Member Chavez. Any opposition to that recommendation? All right, seeing none, that amendment is approved. The next one is page 18. I'm sorry.
The change on page 10 on D, I think there was no motion to alter what's stated there.
Correct. There was no motion, there was just comments.
Okay.
So there's no, the next motion I have on my list is page 18, Section A, which the motion by Member Soria, seconded by me, is to leave, to reject the changes that limit the scope of a call-to-order question and leaves it to the original language, which allows us to call for the question at any time.
That's correct.
Is there an objection to that amendment? Seeing none, that's approved. The next one is Section C on page 18, to, there's a motion by Member Betterfield and a second by Member Chavez to remove preferably, is that correct?
To remove the words preferably should and substitute shall.
And substitute shall. And if we do that, it would undo the previous amendment that we just approved in Section A. Now, on that one, I think we're have to take a vote. There's a first and a second. So the motion is to eliminate preferably and replace it with shall, which would result in us removing our ability to call for a question on any item.
During debate, yes.
During the debate. So there's a motion and a second for that.
Can I, point of order, can I do a competing motion at this?
You have to take the motions one at a time.
But could I put a motion at the table?
If this motion fails, that's up to the council president. You can place another motion on the table, but you have to dispense with the first.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to make a motion just to strike the entire thing. I prefer not to have it as a new rule. That would be my motion.
Okay, so.
The entire Section C.
All right, there's a motion by Member Soria, second by Member Carbasi, to eliminate the whole rule and go back to our current rule, which is, we're allowed to call for a question at any time. Is there objection to eliminating this?
Well, counsel, you should take the motions in order they were.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. There's a, the first vote we'll have is a motion for, by Member Betterfield, second by Member Chavez, to edit Section C as presented by removing preferably with shall. Any opposition? You guys want to do an electronic vote? Let's do an electronic vote.
Mike, push the button.
Don't make me create a rule.
Just do a roll call.
Easy, yes.
All right, that motion fails. Now, to motion of Member Soria, second by Member Carbasi, to eliminate the rule completely, allowing us to interrupt debate at any time in the discussion, please vote electronically. If I may just call for a motion to approve all the rules as amended by the previous, seconded by Member, motion by me, seconded by Member Sparza, all those in favor? Aye, no opposition. All the rules passed by six oh. Thank you, council colleagues, for spending an hour on this matter of rules of decorum. It was officially 55 minutes. Okay. And nobody got cut off, and we didn't have to amend the rules to make sure that Mike votes correctly. Okay, now, we're done with the consent calendar. Now we're up to scheduled council hearings and matters. The first item is at 10, the 10:05 item, it is currently 10:33. A hearing to consider adoption of resolution related to designation of a property by the local register of historic resources. Staff, you have the floor.
Good morning, council members. Before you, as a nomination to the local register for the property located at 1235 G Street, it's located in District 3, and I believe Council President Arias, you had a chance to meet with the property owner. Let me know if you have questions.
And do you have any photos for us to see?
I did submit one slide.
Okay, and let's get on to, this is a public hearing. Is there any member from the public wishing to speak to this item? Are the applicants here? Are the applicants here? No?
Here's, the property owner's not here.
Okay. Yes, so just really quick, counsel, this is in my district. I did have an opportunity with the property owner. This is one of very unique buildings on G Street that has some historical artwork on the outside. It was an abandoned building in disrepair, and the new owners have made all the repairs to the artwork on the outside and are maintaining the facility to a great standard, and they're asking for official historic recognition so that they can continue to maintain the building to the standards that they have improved it to. So seeing no opposition, I'll make a motion to approve. Second, is there any members of the public who wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, any opposition? All right, it's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a continued hearing. It's an appeal request for denial of a waiver of construction of a sidewalk on South Channing Avenue, APN number 464220058, MP 1901742. City staff, you have the floor.
Good morning, council president. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. We have a PowerPoint, well, there we go. Can you go to the slideshow? This is an appeal of a requirement to install a sidewalk on Channing Avenue near Kearney Avenue. This is, the appeal is by the ironworkers. It's a training center. This is the location, it's near Chandler Airport. Kearney is just south, and Channing is the street that it's located on. The ironworkers own two parcels, their building, where it's written, existing building is where they do their training now. They're proposing an expansion into a parcel next door, which is currently vacant. Staff did require that they install sidewalk on Channing Avenue, the red stripe there is where the sidewalk would be installed, be required to be installed. We did defer the sidewalk improvements on Kearney until additional development of the site. We also provided a waiver for the installation of streetlights. They're currently wood streetlights. Our code requires that those be replaced with metal streetlights. We deferred that until further development. We also waived the requirement to convert the overhead wires into an underground system, which is also part of our code. You might ask why are sidewalks needed? Some of the reasons are because Fresno has the highest pedestrian injury and fatality rates per capita in the nation. Last year, we had 20 pedestrian fatalities, we had 118 injuries pedestrian. We've had already two fatalities this year, unfortunately. Most recent one was last Friday, gentleman in a wheelchair, not too far from this area on Brawley Avenue, was unfortunately was hit. If he'd been on the sidewalk, he was in the street, if he'd been on the sidewalk, he wouldn't have been a hit. So with two already this year, we're already seeing that next year will, this year will be as bad as last year, or could be. Our municipal code does require sidewalks with all new development. It's also included in our complete street policy with which this council recently adopted. This is an area with significant truck traffic, a lot of loading and unloading. This is a training facility that serves students. We think that students are more likely to be dropped off or walk than the general public. And anytime a pedestrian is on the sidewalk, they are safer than when they're in the street, even if that sidewalk's not continuous. We do, this is an area that's a low-income area, we do see that we have more accidents in the low-income areas, that's primarily because we have more pedestrians in the low-income areas and less sidewalks. All projects should install sidewalks, waiving the requirement for some projects sets a precedence, plays to favoritism. It's also, sidewalks are also required by the American Disabilities Act. This is a site plan of what's proposed. Their existing building is at the top of the screen. The proposed parking lot is kind of at the middle of the screen, and the remainder of that parcel will remain vacant. They may develop it in the future, or possibly someone else may develop it. These are just, the rest of the slides are just photos of the area. This is, you can see, this is the corner, this is where the sidewalk would be installed. It would also include a handicap ramp on the corner, and that's the corner where that would go. This is their existing facility. It does have a ramp in front that provides for ADA access. This is what the parking situation looks like now. It is a wide street, and that's another shot of the corner where the sidewalk is proposed. That really completes our presentation. I know the applicants also have a presentation they'd like to present.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Can the applicant step forward? You have a presentation? Please identify yourself.
Good morning to all. My name is Sammy Mortada with Grand Bridge Incorporated. We are representing the client, which is the Ironworkers Apprenticeship Trust. They are also here present, but for the purposes of this presentation, I'll be making this one. So, left and right, perfect, perfect. So as you see here, we have a presentation as well, this is for the ironworkers facility. Now, broad strokes, the purpose for which this is happening really is to create an environment where the trainees can come into the facility and be safe. So the goal here is to build a parking lot to supplement the needs for the school, for the training facility. This is the project location, as the previous speaker mentioned. What you see there in the hashed area is the current parking area. It also serves as a training, outside training area for the trainees. The area right below that, where you see project area, is where the new proposed parking lot is going to go. Why are we here? To be honest, we're here because of safety. We want to create or build a new parking facility and fence it in so that the trainees can come in with their cars, park, be able to access the facility, and at the end of the day or end of the training, even if it's evening or dark, they're able to get back to the cars safely and be able to drive out. We'll also be talking about what we have included as part of the project, also the additional safety measures that are in there, and talk briefly about the waiver process that we have gone through. Purpose of this parking lot, essentially, as I mentioned, is mainly for safety purposes, right? As the gentleman before me mentioned, this area have some problematic situations, but in order for the trainees to be safe, one of the purposes for which this has been built is to provide an environment where trainees can access the facility. Now, I want to stress that this entire property is going to be fenced as well. So trainees are able to bring their cars in, not park on the street, park in a parking lot that is going to be illuminated, and be able to access the facility before and after the training. Now, once, obviously, as I mentioned, they're able to access the parking lot, we are installing two very high-intensity LED lights to be able to illuminate the parking lot so that it can eliminate any dark spots or whatever that may be there. Now, this picture is what you're seeing. Now, just taking a look at this, all the trainees are parking on the road. The parking lot will essentially move every single car from on that road into a parking area where they're able to access the facility. This is the proposed site plan that you see here. Now, if you look at it real closely at the top there of Channing, you will see that's the entrance and how the trainees will be able to access a new parking area, so one in and one out. Now, this will essentially prevent any trainee from, you know, parking on the street, but also unauthorized people because it's a one entrance, so people who do not need to be in that facility for safety purposes can also be, can stay out, essentially. This is just a broader scope of what we're looking at. Now, the red lines over there shows the new fencing that's going to be installed. Now, this parking lot currently does not have any, other than the existing area, it's not fenced, so once we build a new parking lot, it's going to be fully fenced, and access is going to be limited to the trainees and whoever needs to be there. Now, obviously, additionally to what we're going to be building the parking lot, as I mentioned, there are going to be handicap stalls, new handicap stalls, LED lights are going to be installed. Also, as part of the new code, we're going to be putting EV allocations for, allocations for EV charging. So in the future, if there are EV cars that are on the lot, they're able to charge the cars. Flower beds are going to be on there, and a pedestrian walkway between the new parking lot and the existing parking lot. Okay, now, in addition to the new parking lot, what the facility has already done, they install new cameras, they install high-intensity bulbs, LED bulbs, to illuminate the existing parking lot, and also, we're going to be fencing the property. Now, looking at all of this, big picture, the new parking lot is going to be fenced, there's going to be access restricted to the trainees and whoever needs to be there, so we're looking at safety as a major priority. But even, as far as the waiver is concerned, and looking at the entire facility, if a portion of sidewalk is constructed, it really does not serve a benefit for that area because now the, all the trainees will be accessing the new parking lot from the existing parking lot, and it provides added security. So really, the benefit of including a 150-feet walkway or sidewalk would not really serve a benefit to the facility at this time. Also, I want to point out, every single facility in this area doesn't have a sidewalk. This is zone light industrial, and for this area, it doesn't really serve as a great benefit to include a 150-feet sidewalk for the, for this construction. Now, I printed out this slide, now, as you can see, the red area is where the new sidewalk is going to be, but the entire place is going to be fenced with one in, one out, so really, it doesn't serve as a benefit for the facility. And I would also like to point out, I mean, Fresno, we're pretty dry, so any trees that is in the area that would serve as some kind of shading really, really helps. The new parking area will be, will be moving almost 100-year-old, 300-year-old olive trees, that really helps for shading. So I just wanted to point that out so that we can consider it, you can consider it in your decision. And overall, in conclusion, instead of being repetitious, I just want to point out that the facility really needs this parking lot, and it will really go a long way to provide a safe environment for the trainees. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll go out to the public before we come to the council. I have one speaker. Sammy? That's you?
Yes.
All right, we're good then. We'll bring it back to the council. We have Councilmember Soria and Sparza, and Carbasi. Carbasi, since you're, since you're not working, your electronics not working, you'll go first.
Thank you, council president. I have some questions for staff. So, Mr. Benelli, I don't know if you could pull up the map on your presentation. Are there other sidewalks in that area?
Not on that block, there are not.
But in the neighborhood, are there some sidewalks?
Well, yes, in the neighborhood, Chandler Airport has sidewalks.
Okay.
I would consider that in the neighborhood. That particular block does not have sidewalks.
Okay. In working with the applicant, were there any, because I want to understand the city's position and also the applicant's position. Were there any concessions made, any accommodations made to them, any mitigation to help them on their overall project?
Yes, there were. The original project- The original project, the original conditions were a requirement for sidewalks on the entire site. That is what our municipal code requires. They are developing that parcel on the corner. So, the original condition was sidewalks on both Kearney Boulevard and on Channing. Because there's some vacant land, we determined that the Kearney sidewalks could be added at a later time. There was also the requirement that they install metal streetlight poles. That's something we require in every project. Replace the wood with metal, because the wood poles are hard to maintain. We determined that the wood poles could remain until the further development on the site. There was also a requirement to underground the power lines in that area. That is also part of our code. We waived that requirement, because there are no underground power lines in that area, so we didn't feel it was needed. So, those are the concessions that have been made today on the project.
Okay. So, they can keep their wood poles for now, they can defer the cost of the sidewalk along Kearney, and the big one is the underground power lines, which would cost quite a lot of money.
It would be very expensive.
Okay, so the city has done some to help mitigate?
We have. It is a nice project. We'd like to see the project go forward.
Sure. So, thank you, that's all I have. I would have been happy to have met with the applicant, but you guys didn't reach out to me. Otherwise, we'd have a conversation. But I would have told you that, at the last meeting, we talked about a safer sidewalks to schools program, that I was very grateful to have unanimous support from the council on. We just had Gene Richards from Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee come talk to us about, you know, safety for bicyclists. And the person Mr. Benelli mentioned was in the Northwest Police District. His name was Ronnie Rodriguez. He was 55 years old. He was on his wheelchair, and it was a hit-and-run, and he was killed because, in part, PD said there was no sidewalk. And we're never going, I know the point was made, well, there's no sidewalks in the area. We're never going to have sidewalks and complete sidewalks if we keep making exceptions. You know, I'm really proud to support our working families. Our working families also have people that are disabled in their families. They have seniors in their families. They have kids in their families. And it doesn't matter whether you're in North, South, East, or West Fresno, every neighborhood in every area deserves sidewalks. There has to be mobility for everyone. I'm really honored that this last, that last meeting the council supported the Safer Sidewalks to Schools Act. And I think that transportation and sidewalks need to be a priority, especially in areas of high occupancy. And I also hope that if the council does vote to support staff, as I'm going to do, our ironworkers will also give the job to local 701 or carpenters to actually build the sidewalk, because you'll get a quality sidewalk. And that's really all I have to say.
Councilmember Soria and Dennis Esparsa. Esparsa, you have the floor.
Sammy, I wanted to ask, you know, what the, at any given time, right, what is the maximum, what is the maximum capacity of the parking lot? And how many cars do you have there at any given time on a daily basis? Just ensure, I mean, I want to hear about the sidewalk not being necessary anymore if the parking lot is built.
So, councilmember, I cannot speak to the amount of students, of trainees, that are in the school currently. What we, as the general contractor, was tasked to do was to create, design and build a parking structure that would accommodate more than what they currently have. What they currently have is, I believe, 20 to 22 parking spaces, which is 20 for regular parking and two handicap. They are increasing that, they are actually doubling that, plus four ADA parking. Now, the goal is really, from my understanding, and we presented the operational statement when we met with planning, the city planning, was, the goal was to immediately meet the need of the growing infrastructure development in and around Fresno. And in order to do that, they need to train more, more, have more trainees and put them and certify them. Now, as you bring them in, they ran into the trainees parking on the street. Now, two things were paramount. One was the safety and of both the trainees as well as the property. Bringing them into the property and creating a parking structure will actually help that. Secondly, they agreed to put up an entire fence, the fence in, fence in the entire property and control access because of previous situations where they have cars breaking into and unruly people, you know, maybe somebody getting somebody on the street. So, in order to eliminate all of that, was to bring them back onto the property itself. I'm not sure if that immediately answers your question, but the goal was to take all the trainees from the, from parking on the street onto the property.
Okay, so, I mean, I think you answered it in the beginning of the answer there, where, I mean, the parking lot is intended, it was built to essentially house the capacity that they are at right now, or a little bit over the capacity that they are currently at.
That is correct.
Terms of vehicles.
That is correct. And if you, if you look at it, well, funds in everything makes a big difference. The reason why they cannot create or build the entire area as a parking lot is because of funds. With all the additions that they, they're trying to meet, and, well, trying to include as part of the project, but also meet their immediate need, one of them, key to it, is making sure it's lighted and making sure it's fenced, so that the trainees are safe. Now, if everything is fenced in, there rarely is, there is really no direct benefit to constructing a sidewalk from the edge of where the parking lot is to the, to the intersection of Kearney and Channing, because of the access that they currently have. So, that's why we appealed the sidewalk construction with Public Works.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Sammy. I'll take that into consideration, along with the opinion of the councilmember that represents the district.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Esparsa. With that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the appeal.
I'll second.
And second by Member Soria. Just to give the rest of my council colleagues some context, this is an area that, as I indicated, is light industrial. It's not near schools, so there is no safe route to schools in this area. But more importantly, part of the agreement that they would have to adhere to is that they will build sidewalks when they develop the whole parcel. That makes complete sense, because that parcel would then butt up against Kearney Boulevard. So, that's why I'm supportive of the appeal by the applicant. We are, my district is one of those places that has several schools that have no sidewalks right across the street to them, or adjacent to them. And I know that Member Karbasi indicated our support for prioritizing sidewalks and safe routes to schools. And we completely intend to do that, while making sure that we are thoughtful in doing it in the right places. So, I do appreciate staff holding every applicant to the standard that the council has set, which is build as much infrastructure as possible, and then allowing us to go deeper in each project to ensure that there's a balance between what's good for the neighborhood, what is sufficient for the applicant to move forward with their business model, in this case, training ironworkers to good-paying jobs that we need, while at the same time, making sure in the long term, we build out that full infrastructure that's been ignored for too long in the city. So, with that, Member Soria, you have the floor.
No, I'd just say that I'm supportive, I think, for the reasons that you stated. I think one other thing, as we're looking in kind of the short term, because it doesn't seem practical to, to build currently that piece of sidewalk, is the elimination of trees. I've had an issue with that. We know that in the city of Fresno, we suffer from really bad air quality, and even if it's just three trees, I think that it's important, and they're historical trees. So, I think we have to figure out, at that point where it does get built out, how we make sure that there's a substitute for that, because I'd hate to lose trees in our city. Thank you.
Member Chavez?
Just want to thank the ironworkers for really investing in our community. I've had a chance to actually go out there and, I'm not going to say weld, because I wouldn't call that welding.
Plain.
But I was wearing safety equipment. But I do, I just wanted to thank you for investing in our community and expanding that facility. I've been out there a number of times, and I know it does a lot of great work in our community, and anyway, we can support that, absolutely be supporting this today. Thank you.
Right, there's a motion, there's a second. Any opposition to approving the appeal by the applicant? Seeing none, it's approved unanimously. Thank you all for coming today. Scheduled communications by, appearance by Mr. Gonzalo Arambula for the 1020 item. Mr. Arambula, are you present? Okay, seeing none, the item will be removed from the agenda going forward as well. Appearance by Mary Padilla. Ms. Padilla, you will have the floor, and three minutes when you begin.
It's a blessed day to be alive. And my subject is rest on peace back to this nation. And one way is through the city of Fresno. We need to consider our weight, our, our weight blessed by the Lord God or not. We have so many shootings. We no longer have morals or values, because for thousands of years, we've left God out of his nation. And so, I would like for all of us to consider our weight of life. We are building, we are building physically, but are we building spiritually, which will last forever and ever? And as far as I go, talking about sidewalks, I am very aware that I stay in River Park, and there are a lot of places in my time. Okay, there are a lot of places, like, for example, the milk home. I would like to visit that, but there's no way to get in there. And if we had peace, we would have love, damage concern for the other person. We are people also who enjoy life. And if we got all this violence out, and God be turned to serving God, and we should, this city would be different.
Thank you, Ms. Padilla. Our next item is the 1030 workshop regarding the Tower District Beautification Plan. Councilmember Soria, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I'll try to keep my presentation brief. We do have Neighborhood Industries, which I will be calling up shortly, but just kind of for the, for purpose of our council, there's no vote or action being made today. We just wanted to make sure that for the public's purpose, so that they know what we are doing and investing some of our own infrastructures into the Tower District Beautification Plan. So, I'm proud to be partnering with Councilmember Arias. We both have the honor of sharing the historic Tower District, and we are announcing that we're going to be doing a three-phase beautification plan for, for this area. As you all know, this area stands on its own as a unique destination point for many visitors throughout the city of Fresno, the region, for its unique entertainment, including the various theaters and dining options, as well as bars to hang out at. So, what we have found in over the last few years that I've represented the tower, and I know we have some merchants here, they have, you know, reminded us of the importance of investing in this area, making sure that we continue to beautify it and invest in it, because it does bring a lot of economic benefits to our community. So, the first phase that we're going to be doing is, we're partnering up with Neighborhood Industries to provide clean, cleanup and little removal services in part of the tower area, and they will be able to show, I think, the second, do you have the slideshow? Sorry. If you can go to the second slide. There's a picture of kind of where that cleanup area is designated, and this is going to be done in a six-month pilot project. We're partnering with Neighborhood Industries, who is a social enterprise in our neighborhood, already doing great things with folks in our community. And so, that's going to be the first phase, and they will explain a little bit more about that project. The second phase, which is the next slide, is going to be a beautification phase. This phase will be kicked off, Phase Two will kick off our plan to over the next 12 months. We're going to be doing a number of upgrades. One, it will include an upgrade to the tower overhead lighting. It's all going to be LED. Right now, if you go and drive through Olive Avenue at night, it's kind of, there's some lights that are on, some lights that are off. Those lights have been there for a number of years and haven't been replaced in a long time. So, what we're planning to do is essentially replace all of them and make LED, which is actually going to help the, the merchants, because the merchants actually pay for the PG&E and the cost of the lighting. And it's going to make it consistent and beautify the area. The other thing that we're going to be doing is, we're going to provide up to eight artistic trash cans along the Olive. They're going to be sponsored by businesses. We did this on the Echo Avenue. I did it in the Fresno High area, so if you get a chance to go across the street from the Fresno High, you'll see these, these beautiful trash cans that were in partnership with Fresno High students. And then, as you guys probably have seen, we also installed crosswalk art, which is very popular, and will continue to maintain that. And then, the last phase, which this council actually has taken some votes on, is the street skate improvements. We've been working very diligently with our Public Works Department, and we're excited to see a project that our staff has worked over the last four years. It's going to provide $1.3 million in infrastructure improvements to Olive from Yosemite to Roosevelt in the Tower District. Just a little update, this project is currently 90% design, and the final design will be submitted next month. The design will include bulb-outs, new highly-visible crosswalks, and brand-new landscaping. The city, after final approvals, will bid and award the construction contract later this summer. And the project construction would then begin in the late September and continue to 2021. So, that's just kind of an update of the three phases. I did want to just give a brief opportunity for Neighborhood Industries, again, who are part of the neighborhood, they want to come and talk about the partnership.
JP, you have the floor. By the way, I dropped off some suits the other day, so your folks took care of us quite easily.
Awesome. Hopefully, I'm wearing the jacket one of these days. Thank you, council. Also, I'd like to thank you for the riveting conversation on the semantics of the words we discussed for an hour. I was educated. Yeah, I don't know if the presentation is on the screen. I'm first and foremost a resident of the Tower District. I've been there for... I've been there for 15 years. I've been in business, and I think we're probably the largest employers in the Tower District for the past 12 of those years. So being a resident and being in business in Tower, we, we've experienced that, yeah, we, we get a lot of outsiders from our neighborhood coming in and enjoying a lot of amenities, the food, the restaurants, the, the bars, the people. But what happened, often happens is after the weekend ends, there's just a, yeah, a lot of trash left on the sidewalks, left on parking lots. And we feel that we, if we want to beautify our city, we can start just one neighborhood at a time. So in partnership with Soria, and we're District One, District Three, Arias and Soria, they've been generous in allowing us to pilot this program, where we believe we can simply just pick up the trash in our neighborhood. And I think there's been some citywide initiatives that are great, and I am in full support of those. But being somebody that lives in the Tower District, I like to see something tangible, something small, something more palatable, that we can actually initiate and execute in a timely manner. So we developed a business plan, you know, years ago. We build businesses that essentially provide second chances for people trying to reenter the workforce. And so we've, you know, some stats I don't want to bore you with, but, you know, 250-plus people have gone off the welfare system, tens of twenties of homeless people that work for us today and have worked for us in the past that have moved on from just rehabilitation to actual contributors. So we feel that this litter abatement program can actually be just one extra opportunity to put paychecks in people's pockets while keeping our neighborhood clean. So the idea is simply just literally walking down the street, picking up trash, extracting recyclables. We currently deter about 5.5 million pounds of waste from the post-consumer system annually. So we already have the infrastructure in terms of trucks, labor, equipment to handle this type of job. We've, we broke it down to a cost per mile, which we feel is pretty competitive, and based on sample sizes from different cities in Dallas, Fort Worth, City of Los Angeles, and Portland, Oregon, and speaking with other organizations doing similar programs of litter abatement, and also workforce development. So we feel that the cost per mile, which includes all equipment, labor, insurances, workers' comp, and all the other employer expenses that would be incurred during this process. I think there's another slide somewhere. Like I mentioned before, the Tower District is one of the most highly foot-traffic areas of our city. And I think the, the issue is simply people have a good time. One, there's not enough garbage cans, so what do you do with that Circle K, you know, Styrofoam cup that you just chugged? There's nowhere to toss it, usually ends up in the gutter. And I think what often happens is that, you know, not just the residents of the Tower District, but also the business owners and the people that operate facilities and business on a daily basis have to end up cleaning up the garbage and just to save face and be presentable. Next slide. We feel a solution is, like I mentioned before, just pick it up. You know, I, I try to walk to work at least once a week when my, my schedule permits. I often fill up at least one small garbage bag every single time I walk, and that's 0.9 miles. So I think what we're proposing to do is not just pick up the garbage that's in the parking lots and the streets, but also servicing every trashcan. I think we identified, there's, I think, 18 trashcans in the region that we're looking to service, and we will service those trashcans in front of bus stops, corners, all the existing ones, whichever ones are added as well, we will service those. And another component we would like to add is simply just pressure washing the sidewalks in the high, high-traffic areas. One of the amazing things about the Tower District is like, I think we do the best we can. Every business, I could say, does their part in trying to keep things clean. But I think with some added investment and some equipment and, you know, our organization, our facility is willing to take on the actual burden of executing the labor on that. The details of this would be, like Soria mentioned, it's a six-week, a six-month pilot. We believe that we can service it right off the bat, just once a week, probably like, like on Mondays or Wednesdays or Fridays, depending on, on the, the days that we feel there's most trash accumulated. We'll be employing four people, part-time, just to actually perform the litter removal. There'll be one position that's supervising that team while providing the, the pressure washing service. We are paying above what the prevailing wage for landscape maintenance labor. So it'll be, you know, 13, between 13 and 13, 25 an hour to start off with. So, next slide. The proposed service area would be the most highly-trafficked area in Olive Avenue, between Palm and Blackstone. And then also the, the main arterials of Van Ness and Moreau, which turns into Ashon. And we'll also be servicing one house in from each street, so if you could follow the green lines. We feel that it's not just the, the main arterial of Olive that's affected, but it's also the, the homeowners that have the, I don't know if you want to be misfortune or the fortune of living on Olive. So we'll be servicing like one, one property in on each street. Here's some of the cost details. We mapped it out, it's 4.5 linear miles that will be serviced in that, that service region. We feel we can execute this in 25 hours per week. So per, per mile, it would be, it would take about five, just over five and a half hours of service each mile. That's like total labor, like with the four people involved, the supervisors. So the cost that is broke down is, like I mentioned, is the cost of each individual. There's garbage bags. We also, because of the Tower District, and sometimes there's needles, so there's like the needle containers, the disposal of those things, the trucks that are involved, the, the disposal fees and all that. So breaks down about $710 per week, which I, again, I feel is pretty cost-effective. So the total project cost over six months is $18,471. That's to maintain, we feel, to keep, yeah, our neighborhood clean. Oh, there's some more things if you guys really want to dig deep into that. So cost breakdown, supplies, administration, labor, truck.
Thank you for the fully in-the-weeds proposal.
Yeah, thank you. I, I want to be as professional as possible.
Yes, you are.
Perfect, thank you so much for that presentation. So we just wanted to present this, there's no council action, but just present it, because we're going to be rolling out in the neighborhood. We wanted to make sure that the neighborhood was aware of the investments that are going to be happening over the next two years. And I believe that the six-week pilot project will also enhance that neighborhood. But most importantly, I think this is about people and the investments we're trying to make in creating those first-time job opportunities, giving people second chances to beautify a neighborhood. So with that, council president?
Thank you, Councilwoman Soria. I'd just like to say that, thank you to JP and everybody, AP, my acronyms are wrong. Yes, I, I've been told many times that downtown is the heart of Fresno, but the tower is the soul of Fresno. And the soul also needs some maintenance, some beautification, some support. And the tower is one of those places where we, they serve the whole city with parades, and they sometimes don't get the same level of support as you would find in downtown for the cleanliness and the maintenance. Those who are lucky enough to live by Olive also understand the burden of having, you know, the nightlife, the after-hours action, and the food. And sometimes that, that, their burden is a little heavy for the neighbors. So the part that I'm excited about and just propose is not only the permanent improvements to the streets of Olive, but also the fact that we're going to actually have a routine for cleaning up Olive proactively, adding more garbage cans so people can use them, pressure washing the sidewalks that sometimes, you know, have that, that leftover smell from a great party the day before. And the same thing for the residential areas near Olive. A lot of the neighbors complained about the great parade for the night before wasn't picked up and cleaned up, and doesn't feel like a neighborhood again the next day. So this is going to allow us to do that routinely. But most importantly, with an organization that lives, breathes, and owns Olive and the Tower District as their home, so we don't have to bring a company from Riverside to simply maintain and beautify our city. So thank you, AP, for your work, and Esmeralda for helping us put this together. Anybody else like to address the council on this item before we move on? Thank you, Danny, for coming with the Tower Marketing Group. I know we're making the official announcement tomorrow, so we'll be happy to see you all then and, and helping us with that. Right, seeing no comments from the public, any comments from the council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the 11 o'clock council workshop, the Presentation on Tax Increment Financing, District Preliminary Feasibility Analysis, by its sponsor, Councilmember Isparza, our economic economist of the council.
Just call me the guru. Second. So I'm excited to, to put on that one-hour lecture that you referred to earlier, Miguel, to introduce what we call tax increment financing, or should I say reintroduce? Local governments in California, and especially Fresno, have lacked any real economic development tools. And so last budget in June of 2019, I asked the council to support some funding to explore the feasibility of tax increment financing districts in Fresno. You folks supported that, and what we're going to see here from our friends at Cosmont Companies are the preliminary results, what they have found in, in exploring how viable these districts can be for, for Fresno. Tax increment financing is not something new or revolutionary. Only, it's only been reincarnated in a different form. We saw tax increment financing with, when we had redevelopment almost 10 years ago and before that. And so, you know, tax increment financing refers to looking at the baseline property value of a site and watching that property increase in value and capturing some of that increment, increased value, in order to reinvest into our blighted neighborhoods and redevelop places like central Fresno, Blackstone Corridor, downtown. So I'm very excited. I think this has a lot, a ton of potential for my district, for downtown Fresno, and for other parts of the city. And so I want to turn it over to Joe, who is going to, you know, give us more details on that potential.
Thank you, council member, and thank you to the entire council for the time to speak today. My name is Joe Dieguez, a senior vice president with Cosmont. For those who don't know, Cosmont Company is a real estate, economic development, public finance advisory firm since 1986, a little over 34 years. I've been with the firm a little over nine years. I had the Infrastructure and Housing Funding Group, which is the topic today. So as the council member mentioned, we're talking about this because there's significant development potential, housing and related development across the city, areas such as Blackstone, other BRT corridors, that's Bus Rapid Transit corridors, downtown, south industrial area, west Fresno. And, you know, state policy direction doesn't always help cities, but in this instance, we believe it has, with the introduction of some of these new tools following dissolution of RDA in 2012. So these tools, you hear a lot of acronyms, tax increment financing, we call it TIF. There are varieties of types of TIF districts these days. There are enhanced infrastructure financing districts, or EIFDs, Community Revitalization and Investment Authorities, CREAs, we call them. And the idea of this study was just to evaluate the feasibility of maybe using one of these tools to capture value for potential new development and reinvest it in the community. Reinvest it in terms of infrastructure, in terms of affordable housing, other types of eligible expenditures, which I'll talk about. There's some detail in this presentation. It was not my intention to go through all of that in gory detail, but to share it with you, to, really in the spirit of transparency, in terms of the approach we're taking, the assumptions we make, the methodology we follow. I think the, maybe the most important outcome that can come from today is no action being taken. It's just to address questions. You know, this is still new material for most folks. So if there's nothing else we can do today, it's just to address major questions that, that, like, his council may have. Beyond today, after addressing any questions, you know, next steps would be to continue to refine this analysis in terms of the potential boundary of the district, the assumptions that we make about new development, potential things that the district would pay for. And then, you know, this is really upfront, this is just a feasibility analysis. We're a bit of a ways away from implementation, and there are some next steps, administrative actions that we can talk about, but that's really a way in the future. So I want to get into a little bit about the overview of the tools, a little bit about the assumptions we make about boundaries and potential partners, the financing and funding numbers, just at a high level, and just kind of finish up with next steps. I will say upfront that we, we kicked off in late August, early September. We had the privilege of meeting with various department heads, the mayor and city manager's office, finance, planning and development, public works, transportation, with the coordination help, of course, with the city manager's office, which was very helpful. And a lot of the information that we learned with department heads really informed this analysis. I should also mention that with County EDC, which was, I'll get into that a bit more, about how important it is to have a regional partner. Spoke earlier about state policy direction. All, all I really want to say here is that the sort of state policy mandates of pushing toward a green economy, greenhouse gas reduction, vehicleized travel reduction, affordable housing. The idea here is to sort of capture that momentum and use it here locally in terms of economic development to accomplish the city's goals, economic development-wise. I'm not going to go through all these details. My point here is that since 2014, with every legislative session, there has been either new tools introduced or revisions, improvements to this new tool set, and it continues today. It was just in October last year, Assembly Bill 119 modified the formation process for EIFDs, and there are various bills in process today that would seek to further improve these tools. We expect that to continue. Councilmember Isparza covered tax increment. This is just a graphic to accompany his conversation, really. The idea with these districts, when you talk about tax increment financing, is the same idea, same principle that was used in redevelopment agencies. Assessed value is frozen at the time of formation. As assessed value increases, either from new development or rehabilitation from property, it can be the choice of the taxing entities like cities and counties to dedicate a portion of some of the property tax from that future growth and dedicate it to one of these districts for infrastructure and housing. So the, probably the main point here is that none of today's revenues in any way are compromised or taken into consideration. Two types of districts I talked about are EIFD and CREA. EIFD, again, Enhanced Infrastructure Financing Districts. Just some of the, the main highlights, it is a separate entity, technically apart from the city. The governing board is called a public financing authority. It comprises membership from both the city council, as well as members of the public. That's important this time around, differentiator from redevelopment agencies. The idea is to be transparent and accountable to the community. If a taxing entity partner came along, like a county, they would additionally have representation on the governing board, such as the supervisor participating on the governing board, since they are contributing funding. There are a series of hearings to form one of these districts, or at least three, 30 days apart. And the idea, again, transparency with the community, taking in the input, revising the plan accordingly prior to formation. Eligible projects are things these things can pay for, infrastructure broadly defined, and housing. The last point on this page is important. We're not talking about property tax increases. Tax increment financing is not the same as a special tax assessment or a business improvement district assessment. A property owner, resident, or business owner does not see any difference on their tax bill or business license application. This is the public agency, like a city or a county, choosing, almost like a retirement account, to dedicate some portion of future revenues and dedicate it for infrastructure and affordable housing. It's a key point here, no new taxes. CREA is similar to EIFD, these are Community Revitalization and Investment Authorities. Similar timeframe, similar governing board composition. Really, the main differences here are you've got to qualify to use a CREA. You've got to qualify by some combination of income, crime, unemployment, designation as a disadvantaged community, sense of track. In our analysis, we find that the majority of Fresno would qualify if it decided to use this tool. Another important impact is the, the things you can pay for. There is a requirement, in the case of CREA, that at least 25% of the funds are set aside for affordable housing. That is a difference from EIFD. Similarly to EIFD, though, it's not an increase in tax, same, same point stand.
Can you repeat that last statement on the previous slide, around affordable housing?
Yes, the, I'll start with the affordable housing set aside. So EIFD can pay for affordable housing and is not required to set aside any portion of funding to do it. It can, it's not required to. CREAs are required to set aside at least 25% of funding for affordable housing uses. And then just after, I just reiterated the point, these are, these are not new taxes. Same as EIFD in that sense. I talked about the types of things these districts can pay for, infrastructure and housing broadly defined, as far as types of infrastructure goes. I mean, it's transit, it's roadway, utilities, water sewer, storm drain, civic infrastructure, parks and open space. It even calls out things like childcare facilities, remediation, and it's this long list that starts with the words "including but not limited to", so it is intended to be broadly defined and flexible. Why are agencies, cities and counties authorizing these districts? Variety of reasons. I just want to touch on the top two, really. I just want to touch on the top two, really. Return on investment. No city council, board supervisors, or finance director at either level is going to agree to contribute some portion of future, future property tax if it is not only, uh, compensated for, but generates a positive fiscal return on investment for the local agency. There's got to be, it is required to be a net fiscal impact analysis that shows what is the general fund impact of implementing one of these districts. And none of our clients, cities and counties across the state, are even looking at these if there is not a positive value proposition, a positive return on investment on a dollar-for-dollar basis. Beyond that fiscal return on investment are the impacts housing units created, uh, across all income levels, jobs created. These are the reasons why public agencies are authorizing these things. The second point is attracting other public money. That's how we use OPM. The idea is that these districts are magnets for other sources of funds. The most direct sense is if the city were to contribute some portion of their increment, that counties, uh, would be, uh, attracted to contribute some portion of theirs. Those conversations are not easy. I don't want to mislead anyone. You go into a county auditor controller or, or, um, CEO and say, are you interested in giving some of your property tax dollars? You don't get a warm reception, but if you provide them with an analysis, show them a positive return on investment, projects that they are interested in, we have now seen in two cases in California, in Los Angeles County and Orange County, that counties will join cities in these endeavors. Uh, so aside from, uh, county increment, increment from other tax entities, grants. These districts are, are magnets for grants. Uh, programs at the state level, like, uh, AHSC, that's the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant Program, the In-Fill Infrastructure Grant Program, also at the state level. These programs are elevating the priority of applications that come from these districts, especially if it's a multi-agency application, over a standard city or county grant application, because they can only do two things, infrastructure and affordable housing. Where are these things going on? Uh, all over the state, infill, greenfield, inland, coastal, the closest districts are, that are fully formed is in Madera County. There are two. They're a current client. We're helping them with a third. Uh, and it's a county going after one of these, an unincorporated area. Uh, but, uh, two others that Cosmont has worked on are in City of Laverne in Los Angeles County, City of Placentia in Orange County. Both of those districts have achieved not only city formation of the district, but a county partnership where the county is contributing some portion of theirs. Aside from those, we're working on over thirty others all across the state. Each one is different, to be honest with you. The type of infrastructure, the political considerations, each one of these is different. All right, let's talk about Fresno for a second. So this is a study area. All we're doing is studying feasibility at this stage. We go off of all of our meetings with department heads, the city's general plan, and we look at various potential focus areas where there is value to capture. We looked at incorporated and unincorporated areas in the sphere, all across the city, across all districts. Uh, and these are areas where really, with staff's direction, we see potential to capture value. The, uh, not to get into too much detail, but all we do is, again, just to be transparent with approach and assumptions here. We take existing assessed value and we make some assumptions about the future growth of that assessed value. In our analysis, looked at these areas individually and cumulatively. We make some assumptions about what the future development potential is in each of this area, in terms of units of housing, square footage of commercial uses. We assume some value per unit per square foot, and then we project forward with timing what that new value generated can be, uh, to figure out what kind of funding would be available to one of these districts. That each dollar of property tax is split up a bunch of, across a bunch of different entities, the city, the county, other agencies all receive a portion of that pie. Um, the largest potential contributors to one of these things are the city and the county. Very importantly, school districts, any education-related entity could not participate even if they wanted to under current legislation. That's an important consideration. We looked at a bunch of different scenarios. This is just a, sort of a, a summary slide. We looked by area individually and cumulatively. We make a bunch of different assumptions about what if the city gave a quarter of future property tax, half of it? What if the city and county contributed? What if they both contributed at different levels? Uh, all I want to say on this slide is, we look at various scenarios informed by the assumptions, by input from city staff. Our goal would be to continue the refinement of this analysis. Talked about it already, city-county partnership. Never a warm reception at first, but with the right case put forward, we think city, we know now that city-county partnerships are possible. It doesn't end there, though. The idea is to use that in parallel with grant applications, pursuit of private sector investment, using things like your opportunity zone designation, which is very important and helpful. We know, as it stands, the city has priority for grant funding by nature of disadvantaged community census tract designation within these focus areas and various other areas of the city. Just to highlight the opportunity zones as well, uh, again, these are incentives just by nature of the federal tax code for private investment to come in. These districts add on to that by saying, look, private investor, if you had concerns about infrastructure or supportive, supporting housing going in around you, these are the types of districts that can help put that in place, or at least commit funding, so that a private sector investor or developer would be more, uh, comfortable moving forward. The return from the city perspective, I talked about it earlier. No one's going to, uh, sign on to one of these things unless it's a positive fiscal return on investment. Beyond that, quality of life improvement, environmental sustainability, housing, job creation, those are just some of the reasons other agencies are approving these. We, uh, in future phases of the analysis, we would quantify all of this. I talked a little bit about city-county partnerships. Very fortunate to say that there are now case studies. Very fortunate to say that Cosmont is participating in all of these. All I want to say is that cities and counties are successfully now coming to the table for partnership. It is absolutely not a guarantee. We've got to ask, we've got to make a case, and each taxing entity has to agree to contribute. But at least there are examples now. So the next steps, I'll reiterate, the most important thing we want to do today is answer questions. We're at the beginning stage of this thing. We're just studying feasibility. Um, with further refinement, we'd want to talk to potential partners like the county for interest in partnership, to see if there are particular areas or projects of interest that informs the refinement of the analysis. We'd, of course, uh, be back to this group prior to any action to actually get implementation started before even starting the public hearings, before making any administrative, um, you know, resolutions or otherwise. Uh, that's where we're at now. Our goal would be to promote these sorts of districts in parallel with other economic development opportunities in the city, like the opportunity zone designation. These things work well in parallel. And then, you know, if we got to the stage of district formation, we'd also want to pursue those complementary funding sources like grants. Uh, so thank you again for the time. Would really like to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Councilmember Soria. Nope. All right, Councilman Esparza, you still have the floor.
All right. Well, hopefully that was all very, uh, very informative, uh, for you folks. I think this is definitely, uh, it's not the complete, whole answer, but it's definitely a significant component, uh, to redeveloping inner-city Fresno. Um, and, uh, you have in the slide there for your consideration, the study areas of the, the, uh, that Cosmont is looking at. It includes parts of, I think, almost everyone's district, uh, so you can take a look and kind of imagine some of the potential there. And it's by no means, uh, final at all. They're going to continue to refine. Um, I, and I've seen some of the, the, more of the nitty-gritty in terms of the, uh, projections, and there is tremendous potential here for, for reinvestment, um, in terms of the revenues that would come into the actual district, uh, and even more so in terms of bonding capacity, uh, for, for investment. So as we're going through, uh, this exercise of reevaluating the general plan and, uh, putting together the costs of infrastructure, uh, in inner-city Fresno, I think that's definitely going to be, uh, a consideration as we move forward, looking at, uh, the different types of tax increment financing districts that are possible for Fresno. Uh, so it's really going to be something that helps us meet our, our infrastructure goals as well as our housing needs, uh, here in the city. And I want to thank, uh, Joe for, uh, coming down. I want to thank the administration for their cooperation, uh, with Cosmont and providing the, all the appropriate data and information, uh, that have been very helpful to, uh, this feasibility, uh, study thus far.
Thank you. Councilmember Soria?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate, um, Councilmember Esparza bringing this forward. I think it was very informational. I'm particularly interested, obviously, in the housing component. I've been kind of pushing, um, additional investments from the city of Fresno to try to get, leverage more dollars, um, from both the state and federal to build affordable housing developments, just because we know how expensive, um, they can be. But just curious from the administration's perspective, um, where are you guys at on this? Um, I know that the mayor has, you know, has touted how he wants to attract more jobs and investments into the city. Um, wanting to see how closely are you guys working on this with, um, is this a priority for him? Um, are we going to be able to explore really, um, leveraging these tools and creating, um, bringing some benefits into the city of Fresno as we're thinking about the future of our city? Just curious to see, um, where you guys are at.
I would not venture, um, an opinion as to, you know, the future, but I know that the mayor remains open to anything that would, uh, contribute to the prosperity of, of the city and, and using what tools are appropriate, uh, to do so. I think that there needs to be, you know, considerable more, um, examination of this possibility and maybe fleshing out details. And, uh, I'm sure that staff will continue to work with, uh, Cosmont in, in fleshing out these details and maybe bringing, uh, some more concrete proposals, um, to, to council in the future for, for consideration.
Yes, Councilmember Soria, I'm, I mean, I'm the one carrying the water on, on this item. Uh, but again, the administration, the mayor, uh, the city manager have been, uh, very helpful, uh, very open to the i- idea as they've gone through, uh, the study. The, uh, the more detailed analysis is about three to four times thicker than the one that was provided to you in the, uh, here in, in the agenda. So I'm happy to, uh, share that with, uh, with my, with my council colleagues. It has been shared with the administration. Uh, the appropriate, uh, staff are working, uh, on this with us.
Perfect. Um, I would be curious and looking more in detail in some of the other areas where you guys are working, and there has been a partnership between city and county. I'd like to see the details of how that works. Um, so...
Would you like me to talk a bit more about it now, or did you mean in the future?
No, just if you could provide, I don't know if it's an excerpt from your guys' report or whatnot. If you guys can provide it to my office, I would appreciate that.
Very happy to do that. Thank you.
The two examples there would have been Placent- the city of Placentia in Orange County and the city of, of Laverne with LA County.
Councilman Brettafield, do you have the floor?
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, to commend, uh, Councilman Esparza for the effort and, uh, looking at ways that we can, uh, do things better from a fiscal perspective is always important. So I appreciate that, and, uh, just wanted to publicly acknowledge that.
Thank you. Um, if that's it, I just wanted to, some closing remarks on the item. I am looking forward to the actionable steps that you bring forward, Councilmember Esparza. Uh, from my perspective, if this kind of specialty, uh, district was available when we launched the Amazon and Alta development, all that additional value that we've generated in that area would have gone towards mitigating some of the impacts that the residents ended up litigating us over. Um, basic things like sidewalks, street expansions, street lights, um, those things shouldn't have to come out of the pocket of other taxpayers, but it should pay for itself. And this is a vehicle for making those improvements as the values increase without burdening the residents with additional taxes. So, um, I do think there's a place for it. I think we're in the right time, especially with the downtown station of high-speed rail and the other downtown developments. We expect higher values in downtown, and we should find a way to ensure that those higher values actually result in improved infrastructure in those areas so that we don't have to then subsidize one sidewalk here, a fix here at the expense of the rest of the city. So thank you for the item, and I'm looking forward to the actionable steps that you bring forward. With that, council, we're going to move on to unscheduled oral communications. We have Michael on Community Choice Energy. Is Michael here? All right. Then, uh, council, we will, um, finish up our meeting and go into lunch. When we return at one-thirty, we will be discussing closed-session items. Legal council, can you read what's going to be discussed?
Yes, in closed session today, we will have existing litigation of the Valeb case versus City of Fresno, and also, uh, the Gap Drive property, real estate negotiation.
Great. And before you leave, council, my office took it upon ourselves, in case you missed your ceremony today, uh, by the Chamber of Commerce, where they're going to give us our report cards. Um, we gave you a little bit of, a little card with your report card. As you can see, I'm mediocre in the eyes of the Chamber of Commerce, while, um, to my left is a excellent example. And to my right is another A-plus, who just showed up a day ago, but somehow is A, an A-plus. And to the economists on the council, somehow he's an F. So, um, in case you missed your opportunity, be recognized this evening. We want to make sure that you got your grades and you wear them with pride, um, as you go down that endeavor.
As Council President, I did get an A in representing my constituents, A-plus, so I want that to be noted.
I just want to thank the chamber for this honor. And hey, it goes to show, no, Democrats are business-friendly. It's true. Thank you.
Point no border, no more speeches, Carbossi. Thank you all, and enjoy your seats.